Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, June 8th, 2010. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With the clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Here.
Mayor Gillette?
Here.
Thank you. Item four, are there any requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item? There being none, 14A is a closed session on labor negotiations, is pulled from the Item five, our special presentations this evening? We have four special presentations this evening, and I'll move to the podium to continue. We have with us this evening Pat Grant, who is the Chair of the Youth Congress Canale Lost Virginous Future Foundation, who is here to tell us about the Foundation's Youth Congress Leadership Program. Pat, come on up, please. Nice to see you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette, and good evening to our council members and to our city manager, Mr. Mitnick. As Dennis has mentioned, yes, I have worked with Youth Congress this year. This is probably my sixth year that I've been involved with Youth Congress, and we've done something very different this year. So I brought two of the people, our young people, who worked on the Youth Congress with us this year, and they're going to talk to you about it. I have Missy Madoff and Jamie Lutz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Missy Malouf, and I am a rising senior at Westlake High School. And I moved here from North Carolina my sophomore year, so this is my first year participating in Youth Congress, and I'm very excited to participate again next year. The Youth Congress Leadership Program, which is sponsored by the Canejo Valley/Lost Virginous Future Foundation, was a new program this year, replacing the Youth Congress program that ran for 25 years. This year, 36 participants had the opportunity to visit in various places in the region to find out how they each contributed to our communities. Students in grades nine through 12 were involved and included those from Agora, Calabasas, Oak Park, La Reina, Newberry Park, Thousand Oaks, and Westlake High Schools. After an orientation in December 2009, we started our visits in January 2010 at the Lost Hill Sheriff's Station, where two deputies talked about their roles as police officers, and then we toured the jail. It was really fun and interesting. The rest of the programs were just as exciting. They included Canejo Valley Unified School District Office, Agora Hills City Hall, the Canejo Park and Recreation District, Lost Robles Hospital, the Acorn and Community Conscience in Thousand Oaks. At each visit, we had leaders such as the police chief and deputies, a mayor and city manager, the school district superintendent, the park and recreation general manager, hospital administrators, and a doctor, newspaper editors, and volunteer organizers to speak to us. Each of these people gave us really excellent insight and information, and they gave us -- oh, I'm sorry. Each of these people gave us really excellent information and insights about how they work with the community and bring about results, and we learned very much at each visit. Before I pass it over to Jamie, I would like to say that even though I've lived here for a short time, I feel really a part of the community, especially being involved in Youth Congress.
We wrapped up our program with a meeting at the Oaks Canyon Community Park in Oak Park, where the Kiwanis Club of Thousand Oaks prepared dinner for us and our families. It was so good, and we thank them. At this meeting, we also talked about what we liked and didn't like about the program, and we discussed what volunteer projects we would like to do, based on what we heard and saw at all those different places. Our top choices were, number one, trying to establish a teen court in the western part of the region; number two, establishing a teen volunteer fair; number three, holding a food pantry drive; and number four, painting a mural. We are still voting and have not yet decided which one of the group will do, but we look forward to being in on the planning, either this summer or in the fall. We made suggestions on how the program could be better, such as having more interaction with one another. This was the first year of the program, and almost all of the students want to return next year. We would like to thank all of the very important community leaders that took the time to meet with us. They all helped to make the program a great success.
Oh, we're gonna have our picture taken.
Pat, do you have a remember how many years this has been done?
It is -- this is 25.
Twenty-five.
It was, yes. It was 25 last year. This is the 26th year that we've done Youth Congress, and I know you've been involved in it.
Since the beginning.
Since you have been a trustee for the Future Foundation, yes.
Right. I remember when the program started. This was an offshoot of the original Caneo Future Foundation.
Right.
Dr. Raymond Olson, and it goes back to those origins. One, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
For keeping going. Congratulations to you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Moving on, we want to recognize the winners of the Caneo Open Space Trails Advisory Committee, COSTAC, Trail Education Days Essay Contest. The winners are comprised of Thousand Oaks 5th graders. I'd like to introduce Elaine Hagan, COSTAC Coordinator, to come to the podium. Elaine, would you please tell us about the contest and introduce the winners? Good to see you.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you, Mayor Gillette, and thank you, council members. My name is Elaine Hagan. I'm one of the coordinators for Trails Education Days, which we like to think of as a crash course in open space education, and which is a program that is in it this year, was its 19th year. Program sponsored by COSCA and implemented by COSTAC, the Trails Advisory Committee. Most of you are well familiar with Trails Education Days. Many of you have participated in the program over the years, and we thank you so much for that. This year, 1,560 students attended, and 85 volunteers and staff members worked throughout the week, some logging 30 or more hours of time. We have really dedicated volunteers. The city, CRPD, COSCA, the Canejo Open Space Foundation, and the school district all help make this program available every year, and we truly appreciate your ongoing support. The Trails Education Days letter-writing contest is actually -- its purpose is twofold. First, it's to provide feedback, excuse me, so that we'll know what the students consider important about their day in the open space, and secondly, to give volunteers and staff positive reinforcement for all their efforts. Two winners are chosen from each participating school, and five grand prize winners are chosen district-wide. I have the great pleasure of introducing three of these grand prize winners for you this evening. First, from Cypress, Victoria Wong, whose teacher is Angel Campbell. Secondly, from Medronia School, Medronia Elementary, Nicholas Don, whose teacher is Valerie Hawkins. And third, from Walnut, Sidney Bumbarger, whose teacher is Megan Hale. So all of these students did excellent work, and I believe you have copies of the letters that they wrote.
This is a little certificate of appreciation for us to say thank you for what you've done. Nicholas?
Thank you.
And Victoria? Thank you. Can we -- do you mind if we take? Okay. So here's a pin that represents the seal of the City of Thousand Oaks as our appreciation for that great job that you've done. Let's step out here and take a picture, okay? Thank you. The last two presentations of the evening are to recognize two young athletes, one from Thousand Oaks High School and the other from Westlake High School. They're to be commended for not only dedicating hours of hard work to achieve their goals, but also for managing their studies, extracurricular activities, and family commitments. These two students and their parents can be proud of their championships, as well as their ability to balance their lives. With the coach of the Thousand Oaks High School Boy Swim Team, Mike Giles, please step up to the podium. Come on down, Mike. Mike, would you introduce your team members and tell us about them?
Sure will. Good to see you. See you. Thank you, Mayor Gillette, for inviting us, council, for having us out for this great privilege. I'm honored to present to you David Armstrong, and what a fantastic athlete he is. I know you've had some tremendous athletes here in the past, and I've been blessed even from the TO side to introduce you to some, but if I can tell you a brief story on David. I know he's heard this enough. We just bragged about him at our banquet the other night, but I've got to say it again. David came to us as a freshman, obviously, and he didn't have a tremendous amount of swim background, but he joined us, and in his first year, he was a swimmer that was junior varsity level, had a unique stroke technique with all the potential in the world, and was able to improve enough to get himself under a minute in a hundred freestyle. It's one of the milestones in swimming, get in under a minute for those four laps. Then David went and watched some of his friends that postseason at CIF down in Long Beach, Belmont. Not many junior varsity swimmers take that effort or make that effort for that kind of an excursion, but David did, and he called his shot. He told his folks at that time that he wanted to be back in just a second year of high school swimming at CIF finals. He went off. He trained club, a great club of class over here, and he did an outstanding job with his coach, Steve Riordan, who I also give tremendous credit for, for David's success, and went ahead and came back his sophomore year and ended up in the finals of CIF. Somebody that called his shot, to be able to do that in one year is magnificent. You know, if we all had athletes like this throughout our program, life would be a lot easier, but David is one of those guys that, you know, is one of those guys that had a vision, and he made it happen. He helped -- the reason why he's here is for winning the 50-yard freestyle. So in his third year into swimming, just as a junior, he got himself down to, he's really within just over a second plus off of the national high school record in the Hundred Fly. He set himself up for a 20.97 in the 50 freestyle, which he was seeded first in, and he did have that final race going up against seniors. The 50 free is a senior man's event. You've got to be pretty big and strong to get that event in, and David, with his phenomenal underwater, his pullouts, and his great David Armstrong-only finish, pulled off the win at a 20.97. It was brilliant. It helped lead us in our magnificent seven to a top-three finish in CIF, which was great, and we couldn't be more thrilled. So that's the story of David and what he accomplished and how he led his team. For me to go further, being in honor of the late, great John Wooden, you know, he has a quote. He says, you know, "Talent comes from God. Be thankful." You have, then his next part is, "From," let's see, "Praise comes from people. Be humble." And then from, you know, what is the final part of that, David? It's a great one. Conceit comes from ourselves, and be careful. And David really, on that line, is he's careful, he's certainly humble, and he's obviously talented. And for that, I know he's certainly a blessing to his family, and I know for a fact, he's a blessing to us at Thousand Oaks High School. Thank you. I've worked on that quote.
You did pretty well.
Thank you very much.
David, two things. One, let me give you a pin which represents the seal of the City of Thousand Oaks, and I'm going to read your citation for this. Commendation is in honor of Thousand Oaks High School Boy Swim Team member David Armstrong, 2010 individual CIF champion. David Armstrong, a member of the Thousand Oaks High School Swim Team, won the 2010 CIF Southern Section Division II Championship in the individual boy's swimming 50-yard freestyle varsity event. And David won this individual event with a time of 20.97, as he and the Thousand Oaks High School Boy Swim Team represented the Miramani League in this year's CIF championship competition. And David and his team, coached by Mike Giles, showed outstanding commitment and sportsmanship, and David Armstrong and the Thousand Oaks High Swim Team demonstrated exemplary athleticism and represented our community with distinction. Now therefore, I, Dennis Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby commend David Armstrong and offer congratulations on his 2010 individual CIF championship. Congratulations. We're very proud of you, son. Done a great job. Now, I would like to ask Westlake High School Coach Todd Armas to come up. And Todd, if you would introduce your team member and tell us about her title. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to Haley Preston. And before I go into what she's done this year, and she's done quite a bit, I want to thank the council for recognizing our student athletes. I know we have at least one council member here who has a child that's involved in swimming and knows exactly how much time is involved as far as practices and all those things that go with commitment, and Haley is definitely an example of a great commitment. So thank you again for recognizing her. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Haley's accomplishments this year. First of all, Haley is a sophomore, and she came to us as a transfer from Notre Dame, and I must say that Notre Dame's loss is definitely our gain. It really helped us out to have her this year. She's being recognized here tonight for her CIF championship in the 100-yard backstroke. Her time of 55 seconds and some tenths is in All-American time, automatic, which means she's in the top 130 swimmers in the country. That's quite an accomplishment for a 10th grader. I also wanted to let you know that her 200 freestyle at CIF was in All-American consideration time. She has a hand in two of our school records this year. She was a member of our 200 medley relay that went 148, which is also an automatic All-America time, and she's also, obviously, the backstroke record holder now at our school. At league finals, she was league champion in the 100 backstroke, part of our medley relay league championship team, and she was also league champion in the 200 freestyle. And Haley's just been a wonderful kid to coach. She's definitely been an important part of our program. Just in the year that she's been here, she's contributed so much to our school and to our program. Very, very pleased with her accomplishments. And I had also had a little quote from John Wooden. My father played for John Wooden. He was his first graduating class at UCLA, pre-national championship days. So Wooden said that athletics don't build character, they reveal it, and what they've revealed in Haley is just a super kid who's well-grounded and loves to swim, and I'm very, very pleased with her accomplishments.
Congratulations. Two things. One, let me give you this pin which represents the seal of the City of Thousand Oaks, and if I may, I'm going to read the citation. This commendation in honor of Westlake High School Girl Swim Team member Haley Preston, 2010 individual CIF champion. Haley Preston, a member of the Westlake High School Swim Team, won the 2010 CIF Southern Section Division II Championship in the individual girl's swimming 100-yard backstroke varsity event, and Haley won this individual event with a time of 55.72, as she and the Westlake High Girls Swim Team represented the Miramani League in this year's CIF championship competition. And Haley and the team, coached by Todd Armas, showed outstanding commitment and sportsmanship, and Haley Preston and the Westlake High Swim Team demonstrated exemplary athleticism and represented our community with distinction. Now therefore, I, Dennis Gillette, Mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby commend Haley Preston and offer congratulations on her 2010 individual CIF championship. Congratulations, Haley. Very proud of you. If you wouldn't mind, let's have the athletes and also let's have our Caneo Future folks, our Caneo Lost Virginous folks. Let's get a picture with the council and give the council a chance to congratulate these young people individually. Why don't we step right out in the center of the circle there? Coaches are allowed in this. Okay, item six, public comments section. Would the clerk please call a public comment section?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Six people have presented cards. In pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening will be Cheryl Johnson, followed by Mike Paul. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Cheryl Johnson, County Rio. And thank you, Mayor Gillette, and good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Cheryl Johnson, and I'm the chairperson for the city's Community Safety and Wellness Day event. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to share information about the Third Annual Community Safety and Wellness Day event, which will be held tomorrow, June 9th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. in the park in front of the Civic Arts Plaza. The City of Thousand Oaks and Caneo Recreation and Park District have partnered together to offer this event, which would not have been possible without the generosity of our many community sponsors. The public is invited to attend this free lunchtime event, which will offer free professional health screenings, courtesy of Lost Robles Hospital, neck massages, giveaways, and over 70 safety and wellness-related exhibitors. Exhibitors will offer educational information and resources on family safety, child fingerprints, nutrition, fitness, heart health, and much more. The free health screenings include blood pressure, blood glucose, body mass index, and foot screenings. There will also be free bus transportation from the Global Senior Center to this event. Participants can also enjoy heart-healthy lunch options available for purchase. And speaking of food, for those interested in helping those in need, Mano will also be available to accept donations of non-perishable food items. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, and the Employee Safety and Wellness Day Committee would like to thank the city council and the Caneo Recreation and Park District Board of Directors for your support in promoting safety and wellness to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Our second speaker, Mr. Mike Paul, followed by Rudy Gonzalez. Mr. Paul, I would mention, is the chairman of the Board of the Triumpho Sanitation District, which serves a large segment of the eastern portion of the City of Thousand Oaks. Good evening, Mr. Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you here briefly this evening, kind of apropos, I suppose, since it is election night and the ink has not yet dried on the ballots, and I'm going to be talking about the November election already. So from one to the next. As the mayor has indicated, I am the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Triumpho Sanitation District. I'm also a member of the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council. Last year, the Triumpho Sanitation District voted to change its governance to an all-elected board. Currently, we have a board of five individuals. We will have four seats available for this November election. In an outreach program, I'd like to address the board and talk a little bit about the opportunity for residents to serve in a unique public service opportunity on the Triumpho Sanitation District Board. Just briefly about Triumpho, we serve a population of about 32,000 residents with an operating budget of about $13 million. Triumpho provides wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal, as well as potable and recycled water distribution for an area of about 50 square miles of the southeastern part of Ventura County. This includes the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks, portions of North Ranch, Lake Sherwood, Oak Park, and Bell Canyon. As I mentioned, this November, we will be moving to an all-elected board. Currently, two of your council members serve on the Triumpho Board, Mayor Gillette and Councilmember Glancy, and I would like to thank you for your service on the board, for all the things that you've done for Triumpho over the years. We certainly appreciate that. Moving to an all-elected board, we are looking for residents who want to serve. Moving to an all-elected board, we are looking for residents who want to serve. It's a four-year term. Again, the election is this November. We have an information piece that's available. I'm going to leave some kind of on the way out, I guess on the table, as well as residents who may want to learn more about the opportunity to serve can go to the website of the district, which is triumposanitationdistrict.com, or they can call 805-658-4642. So, I think just about out of time, but it is definitely a fulfilling and rewarding experience to serve the district and the many issues that come before us. Obviously, water is a critical issue in California. So, we are looking for individuals who want to learn more, who want to serve, and we certainly encourage them to do so. The board does meet the fourth Monday of each month in Oak Park, and also, board members serve as part of a joint power authority with Las Virginas Municipal Water District, and those meetings run the first Monday of each month. Again, more information is available, and appreciate the time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Would you care to repeat that website, please?
Certainly, thank you. It is triumposanitationdistrict.com.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rudy Gonzalez, followed by Priscilla De Strados. I'm sorry. Priscilla De Chardin. I think I got it closer that time. Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, council members, Mr. Menick and staff. My name is Rudy Gonzalez. I'm Edison's Public Affairs Manager for Thousand Oaks. I'm here this evening to extend an invite to you and the community to Edison's Homeowner Solar Class that will be co-hosted by the City of Thousand Oaks. The class will take place here in the Share Forum next Tuesday, June 15th. The session begins at 6:30 p.m. and will conclude at 8:00 o'clock p.m. or until everyone's questions are answered. This free class will focus on the California Solar Initiative, or CSI, program, and the incentives it offers to homeowners who decide to install solar systems on their homes. Attendees will learn about solar energy basics, benefits of installing a solar energy system, tax credits, and other financial models that can help reduce upfront costs, and financial incentives through the CSI program. This class is non-technical and easy to understand. Registration is required, and there are two ways to do so: online at sce.com/solitraining or call 866-970-9221. In addition to the solar class, I would like to encourage residents to enroll in Edison's Summer Discount Plan. Upon enrollment in the plan, Edison will install a small, remote-controlled device on your home on or near your central air conditioner. If necessary, Edison will turn off or cycle your air conditioner's compressor off and on during an energy emergency. In exchange, customers will receive a credit of up to $200 on their summer electric bills based on the plan option and the size of their air conditioning unit. The plan has been available for six years or so, and in that time, we've averaged just around one interruption per year. To sign up for this program, go to sce.com and follow the links to residential rebates and savings. Finally, I wanted to take this opportunity to give our small businesses in the community a heads-up on Edison's Direct Install Program that we will implement this fall. Qualifying small businesses, those with a demand of less than 100KW, will receive a letter in late August or early September inviting them to participate in this program. If they agree, Edison contractors will come out free of charge and complete an energy evaluation to identify energy savings opportunities. With the business's approval, the contractor will schedule an appointment to come back and install energy-efficient replacement equipment at no cost to the business. Energy-efficient upgrades include fluorescent lighting, refrigeration gaskets, door closers, suction line insulation, and strip curtains, LED open and exit signs, window film, occupancy sensors, and programmable thermostats. Each small business that participated in our pilot program last year received, on average, $1,200 worth of energy upgrades for free. I hope that all qualifying small businesses in Thousand Oaks will take advantage of this program. Thanks for your time.
Rudy, just a second. This Phil Dale opinion.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez. I have two quick questions. First of all, regarding the solar equipment installation, is that something that, or the solar class, is that something where Southern California Edison is recommending its own equipment or referring to subcontractors? That's my first question. And the second question is, when will the smart meters be available in this area?
Okay. In response to your first question, all we're trying to do is educate individuals on how to go about determining whether or not to install a system and how to be as educated as possible in determining the size of the system. We have no financial gain or any incentive to, other than to educate our customers. So, we're not pointing folks to a particular solar installer. There may be some installers that attend the program and who may attempt to discuss the installation with some of the folks. We ask them not to do so as part of the program, but to wait and to do it outside of the building. So, all we're trying to do is educate. And the second question, in terms of smart meters, we started that process, it's been in the process for about seven or eight months now. We are looking to be in this area probably towards the latter part of 2011. And in preparation for that, we will roll out an education plan where customers will be notified of when the contractors will be in their neighborhoods changing out their meter, and at that point, we'll provide more information on the capabilities of those meters. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rudy, just one other thing, which is germane to your comments about Edison's initiatives. Yesterday afternoon, Mrs. Irwin and I had the opportunity, we were invited to a presentation on ribbon-cutting at Westlake High School. Student initiative, the concept came up with a group of students, they pursued it, they raised the money, they purchased the equipment, they partnered with a firm, and they have installed a solar array on the art building, which is functioning. And this was all student-driven. Took a lot of cooperation, and they also got some, had some interaction with the bureaucracy. But, very proud of their accomplishments, and we were both very impressed with what we saw out there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Priscilla De Chardin. I hope I got that clause, followed by Mr. Nick Kidway. Good evening.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Priscilla De Chardin. And my issue is the Costco project that you had in front of you. I'd like to know why it was turned down when it, in sense, would have provided employment for the Canejo Valley and also would have provided revenue and money and tax money for the City of Thousand Oaks. And also, it would be the logo that we always say, shop in your community. People here would shop in the Canejo Valley instead of going to Simi or even Westlake and kept our tax money in the city of the Canejo Valley. And also, my other, I don't know what circumstances was that you turned it down, but I know a lot of people are very dissatisfied with that project that was shut down. Also, I live in Newberry Park, and I've been there 24 years, and I live off Windy. And the congestion on Oak Canejo Road, Oak Canejo Road is just ridiculous. When Los Yentes went in and when the Business Center went in, there was no improvement made on the Oak Canejo Valley, Oak Canejo Road, or the Windy Bridge. And it seems like it's getting worse and worse. And also, there's going north on Windy, on the middle lane. You make a left, you go to the light on Oak Canejo Road. The middle lane is, there's a sign that says, it just says, "No Yield," or it says, "Nothing." People are stopping there, like a stop sign, and it's going to be causing a lot of accidents because you get people coming off the freeway, going north, and they come to an abrupt stop. And I experience this all the time. And it's just frustrating to me. And I just was just dissatisfied with the rejection of the Costco project. And like I said, I'm not only speaking for myself, but I'm speaking for a lot of people in this community. Thank you.
If you'd care, the Costco project was not, emphasis, not turned down. It was not rejected. The market forces that were behind that, that was a corporate decision on the part of Costco. If you think about rings, the market area was stores in Oxnard, Simi Valley, and Westlake Village. And what Costco eventually was asking of the city was just not acceptable. So, the project was not turned down. Costco made a corporate decision to withdraw its application. And I'll ask the city manager to come out when you leave and give you whatever other details you need. But to say that that was part of a process that the city had control over and that the project was turned down is incorrect. Okay?
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, that's fine, and we'll give you a little more information, and we'll give you whatever information we can on the steps that that took. We were all set to hear it on Tuesday night, the Monday before the application was withdrawn. And that was a corporate decision on the part of Costco.
Okay. Can I ask you one more, one more issue?
Your time is up, but go ahead.
All right. I remember a few years ago that we were sent out what we wanted to put on the City Hall at the, you know, instead of the grid up on top, you know, the radiator grid.
Okay.
All right.
The copper curtain.
Yeah, whatever it became of that.
Whatever it became of the copper curtain.
Yeah, well, you know, whatever it became of, I mean, we were asked for suggestions and stuff.
Well, I think the best way I can say that, it's a work in progress.
All these years?
All these, 14, let's see, the building's been open now 15 years? It's been a work in progress for 15 years. That's correct.
Seems like a long time. Thank you.
Mr. Nick Kidway, followed by Janet Fleming. Evening.
I begin with the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. And Dr. Glansey is still director of Concern City of Thousand Oaks. Members are dying or watching Lakers games. I mean, it's pretty disgusting that you folks have no regard for the president because you meet in the State of the Union. For the record, right now, Mr. Fox, the Lakers are 26-17, and they've had a run-up since I've been over here, and I cannot see it on TV. Kobe scored seven points, and Lamar owed him six. If TOTV will cooperate, I want to show you, the council, this is the Westlake Hospital, which is actually the Las Robles Hospital, and it's in this condition. Boarded up. I have a second slide. Planning Commission had a hearing, and I know it's going to come before you. Councilmember Gillette lives in the area. I mean, you are duty-bound to protect the neighborhoods. The hospital originally envisaged as a small, local hospital. This is a corporate decision to make more money. I mean, simple as that. I hope that the council people will look at this in the real interest, and I hear that it's going to be coming in July. It's amazing. Here is the official council agenda packet. I mean, what, 240 pages? I looked at it on Friday because we don't provide it in adequate time. And then on the star, lo and behold, there's a story about budget problems will force Thousand Oaks to lay off seven, nowhere here. In fact, it's the official council policy not to talk to the press about issues. But, lo and behold, when it's a chance to make PR, there's an exception. In fact, the disgusting thing is, why, why only seven layoffs? I mean, I feel sorry for the people who are laid off, but I mean, we are going through a horrendous crisis, plus they eat no work. I mean, this city is built out since 10 years. I mean, I can guarantee you that if you check the computers of these people, they are instant messaging and running businesses. The great thing is that the star has a blog, and it's pretty wide open. And I would like to quote some of these people because people think I'm harsh. Five R writes, "Gee, perhaps the union that helped cause the budget shortfalls might consider hiring them." Here first says, "Welcome to the real world from the fantasy land of public unemployment." Now they can go and get their Obama jobs. Thank you for letting me speak.
Our final speaker this evening, Janet Fleming and Alida De Rod. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council and staff. My name's Janet Fleming. I live in Thousand Oaks, and I'm the Director of Canejo Valley Neighborhood for Learning. We just had more good news to share with you about the city center, and I don't want to take too much time. I want to have Alida to have the time to speak in depth about our new website and some of the events that have taken place recently. But I just wanted to say that we're almost wrapping up our first year as managers of the city center. Things continue to grow. We just opened up our second toddler class, and by the end of summer, we'll probably be completely full in that. We look forward to the next year, and we just left a really dynamic parent meeting where we've had some plans for some fundraising and some parents working on the site with us, and things are just looking onward and upward for us. And now I wanted to introduce Alida. She is our Family Services Coordinator at the center, and she'll talk about our Family Fun Night.
Hello. My name is Alida De Rod, and I do live here in Thousand Oaks. I am the Bilingual Family Services Coordinator for the city center, and I am definitely here to just talk about how, just great news, how the city center is growing within 11 months. I do have to say, our infant classroom, we have a waiting list, not for two or three months. We actually have a waiting list till next year, January of next year. We have mommies that are three months pregnant, and they already are on our waiting list. Toddlers, we have a second classroom open. And preschool, we have always had a waiting list. State, of course, is doing great. It's doing awesome. I do have to say that it's because I am part of Family Resources, so I'm always in communication with our families. And I do have to say that I'm very proud to work in a school where diversity is our number-one priority. I have always told my parents that diversity is something to never be forgotten, it's always to be celebrated every day. And that is what's so great at the city center. You walk in, and you'll, we are able to help every parent in the City of Thousand Oaks, from Westlake, Thousand Oaks, to Newberry Park. I also want to say that we did just have our Family Fun Night, and our very first Family Fun Night. It was a gold green, organic theme. We had the pizza salad, donate organic pizza. We had waste management, donate. And we also had Home Depot donate a lot, a lot of products. So, out of 79 families, we had 79 parents show up, with the total of 129 people showed up to our first Family Fun Night, and this was Friday, June 4th, from 6:00 to 7:30. So, we are just so very excited that we've been open 11 months, and we have a waiting list for each and every one of our classrooms. And I completely forgot to tell you, I'm also a parent at the city center. Do we have three? I'm also a proud parent of a five-month-year-old baby girl, and I am very lucky, very blessed, to be able to bring my baby to work. She is in the infant classroom, and I am able to walk in to work and bring her with me. And on my break, on my lunch break, I get to see her, and it is thanks to the city, it is thanks to the city center, and thanks to me being on the waiting list, or else I would have had to waited another year. But I just wanted, I wanted to come and just say thank you so much to each and every one of you to give us this opportunity, and also to talk a little bit about our website. Our website is very user-friendly. If you want to know more...
You'll have to conclude your remarks. You're over on your time.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Six minutes?
Give your website if you have it available.
Okay, very user-friendly. You can just log into CVNFL, Canejo Valley Neighborhood for Learning, and... for Learning, and anything you want to know about us, our education background is on our website as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comments section of the agenda. We move to item seven, City Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Pleasure of the council. I would like to, I would like to hold item K for discussion, and I do have speaker card. Okay. Oh, Mrs. Bill DeLaPena.
I would like to hold item J.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fox?
Gail, move the balance of the consent calendar, with the exception-
I'll tell you what, you want to, you want to hold it until I get the cards out?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kidway?
Nick Egbal Kidway reporting, thirty-seven, twenty-four. We are on a roll. I wish I could be there.
Thank you.
How about some free tickets that the city manager gets, and maybe I can use them? Well, you heard about Oxnard, you know? Number B minutes, still disgraceful, un-American. I mean, even getting free tickets is not un-American. I mean, that happens in communities. No harm done, Mr. McNaik. I'm just talking about Oxnard is a bad city. We, we don't have those problems here. In fact, I wanted to say that the coach from Westlake had talked about sports revealing character. In fact, politics also reveals character, and these minutes reveal character. I mean, they're illegal, but who's going to go and file lawsuits about that? It's just horrible, horrible, that this city does not improve, Mr. Glancy. I mean, we get new people, we have, having election today. I want to talk about J also. Civic Arts Plaza security upgrades. This is what is known as free money, just like the redevelopment agency money, it's coming from Homeland Security, it's coming from, I don't know. But it reminds me of when this building was built, and I started speaking on the consent calendar, these ridiculous change orders. You have the change order here again, that's why this is being brought back. I mean, the purchasing system, despite the efforts of a lot of citizens, I was on the mayor's business roundtable, Mr. Siegel tried to make changes, but it's, it's just, just tax and waste, tax and waste, tax and waste, Mrs. Irwin. I mean, do something about it. I mean, number K, the Newberry Park Library, I was there this morning, and I just couldn't believe, I mean, how bad the parking lot is. I mean, and, but you are increasing the budget to forty-nine thousand, that's a twenty-thousand-dollar change order. I mean, either the first contract, there was something fishy on it, or you're not following due diligence. Once again, coming from Newberry Park, Dr. Glancy, we are stepchildren. When are we not going to be treated like stepchildren in Newberry Park? We are part of Thousand Oaks, we deserve an equal footing. Go Lakers.
Okay, if, Mr. Fox, you had indicated Mrs. Bill DeLaPena wanted a discussion on J, and I had asked for K. I, I get the two?
Okay, I'm going to move the balance of the consent calendar for approval.
I have a motion, move the balance of the consent calendar, discussions to the motion. All those in favor? Please vote.
The motion carries five-zero, and the ordinance title for L is Ordinance Authorizing Amendment to Contract Between City of Thousand Oaks and California Public Employees Retirement System Administration.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We'll go back then to item J, Civic Arts Plaza Security Upgrades. Mrs. Bill DeLaPena.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for housekeeping purposes, since I have voted against the improvement in the past, I will not support it tonight.
Thank you. Um, let me, let me take K, as long as we're here. I would like whoever's going to speak on this to expand the scope of the, to explain the scope of this project, because it's, there's a lot more in the staff report, and just to kind of hit the, the points, what all is this entailing? What all is this covered, including the solar application?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and council members. The project started out as merely a parking lot replacement project, as was indicated. The parking lot has not been redone in almost twenty-five years, and is in need of severe repairs. When we started looking at the project, we took this to the Ad Hoc Capital Facilities Committee and discussed ways that we could do this as a more sustainable or green project. So the project budget was accepted two years, or a year and a half ago, to include stormwater management detailing, such as pervious paving and a bio-swell. So the project grew a little bit, in the sense from the original concept of a simple replacement to an actual sustainable design. Now, while we were doing this, we also were looking at solar projects, as the council may be aware, and the Newberry Park Library is a prime location, because there's a high need, and the parking lot is ideal for putting solar canopies. So again, the project had to go through another change to accommodate redoing of some landscaping that wasn't in the original project, and the majority of this amendment with the civil engineers is for landscape architecture, subconsultant fees to redo landscaping to make sure trees aren't going to shade the solar, taking out some landscaping below the proposed solar, and this all needed to be incorporated into one project. So the project has evolved, it is going to be a demonstration project that will include, you know, sustainability issues from renewable energy, water management, and overall, a really good project as a demonstration to the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, unless there's additional comments or questions, I'll move items seven J and seven K. Comments to the motion? Mrs. Bill DeLaPena.
Would you mind doing those separately, because I would like to vote for item K?
Okay.
Thank you.
Fine, thank you. Let's, I'll move item J. Comment to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries four-one, Councilmember Bill DeLaPena dissenting.
Thank you, and now we'll move item K. Comment to the motion? Being none, please vote.
Motion carries five-zero.
We move now to item eight, Public Hearing, Annual Collection of Delinquent Wastewater Service Charges. Would the clerk please call the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 8A, the annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges, property tax roll. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you very much. Staff report, and please.
Good evening, council. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service charges on active accounts by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's annual property tax bill. Wastewater account holders are notified of their delinquent balances via building reminder notice, and then letters are also sent annually, beginning in March, notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid. Leans are placed on the parcels for amounts that are one-hundred-and-twenty days past due in April of each year, and subsequent letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city intends to attach the past due amount to the property tax rolls. To put this into context, when Finance started this process in March of this year, we identified eight-hundred-and-sixty-six wastewater accounts with delinquent amounts totaling one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand dollars. Over the past few months, customers have responded to the notices and have paid. In April, four-hundred-and-fifty-three leans were placed totaling approximately one-hundred-thousand dollars. Customers continue to pay, bringing the amount subject to attachment today to two-hundred-and-seventy-seven accounts totaling approximately sixty-nine thousand dollars. This is a very small number of accounts to be attached compared to the thirty-seven-six-hundred total connections. It's approximately point-seven percent, or less than one percent. Another way to look at it is, it is approximately point-four percent of our annual billings of approximately seventeen million dollars. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution and approve the list of names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the county tax collector for inclusion on the property tax bills.
Thank, thank you very much, and I apologize, I was remiss in introducing Terry Scott, Revenue Operations Manager, and I apologize for that. Questions of staff? Have no questions, and we have no speaker cards on this item. City manager has a comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to just compliment Finance and the public work staff for their great work in this area. When you heard that number, the delinquency rate at point-seven percent, I mean, it's a phenomenally low rate, and if you look at other municipalities throughout the state, I don't know if it gets any lower than this. So it's also a reflection of the high-quality residents and businesses we have in the community. So we do this every year, we try to minimize that number, we'll keep working on it, but just outstanding work, even in a recession, hard-hit recession with almost ten percent of our workforce out of work, that's a very low number. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions of staff, or comments from staff? Are being none at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Pleasure of the council. Mr. Fox?
I will move the recommendations, one and two, with the associated resolutions, and that is for the annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges. Also approve a list of property owner names, addresses, and parcel numbers, and the assessment amounts to be submitted to the county tax collector on file with the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Comments to the motion? Being none, please vote.
Motion carries five-zero.
Good evening, Mayor.
Next item will be item eight B, Inclusionary Housing in lieu of Non-Residential Linkage Fees Update. City clerk, would you please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item B1, Inclusionary Housing in lieu and Non-Residential Linkage Fees Update, and Recommendation on Maintaining Fee at Zero, as well as Item 8B2, Non-Residential Development Linkage Fee Program, Study on Classification of Nonprofit and Institutional Uses, and Recommendation to Exempt Nonprofit Private Schools, MCA 2010-70236. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this hearing, and we have no cards.
Thank you, Florence. Staff report, Mr. Bill Hatcher, Senior Planner. Evening, Mr. Hatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the clerk indicated, we're going to be talking about two items this evening, and the first is, we're returning to you with an update and recommendations on our affordable housing ordinance fees. And just by way of background, very briefly, in November of two thousand and seven, we came before you with a fairly complex study that set forth recommendations that included these fees, and it was a fairly complex methodology that was established to demonstrate feasibility when we set these fees. In July of two thousand and eight, we came before you with the actual affordable housing ordinance, that was initiated and became effective in October of two thousand and eight. And then we came before you last May, and recommended that the fees be temporarily set to zero, given the economic conditions at that time that had been precipitated by the current recession. And we are back before you now, as directed. And just, again, by way of reminder, the, the fees were set using a feasibility model, and the inclusionary housing fees originally were nine thousand dollars per detached dwelling unit, twenty-five thousand dollars per attached dwelling unit, and then for the non-residential linkage fees, they were originally set at four dollars and fifty cents a square foot for commercial retail, two dollars and fifty cents a square foot for office and lodging, and then industrial and research and development were originally set at zero, again, because of the feasibility model that we were using to set these fees. And then separately, there are certain uses that were not classified and termed other, and these require special determination by the community development director, and a couple examples of that have been an assisted living facility and the hospital, most recently. What I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through what we see as the key variables and economic conditions that lead us to our conclusion tonight, and I'd just like to do that in a very general sense, there's more detail in the staff report, and I'd be happy to respond to specific questions if you have them. In a general sense, economic conditions have stabilized at a national and county level, job losses have stabilized, what we see is manufacturing and construction activity are beginning to increase, and credit markets are, are beginning to unlock a little bit. On the negative side, while we, we have job stabilization, we don't really have much job creation, and unemployment remains very high, and most specifically in the county, it's at ten and a half percent. But that did drop from eleven-point-one in the preceding month, so maybe that's marking an improvement locally here. And then consumer spending remains relatively weak. With regard to residential market conditions, the positive aspects are that sales activity has increased over the last year-plus, and median sales prices have increased from the trough in early two thousand and nine, and there's some discussion about whether this just represents movement into higher market segments, and also more activity in coastal areas, which we are termed. And then on the negative, you still have exceedingly high inventories, foreclosure activity is still relatively high, even though it's come down, but there's still a lot of notice of delinquencies going out, which could be a precursor for additional delinquency and foreclosure activity. And then lastly, federal programs have terminated. A lot of the sales activity recently is probably attributed to that homeowner tax credit, which was ended at the end of April, and then the Federal Reserve was taking some actions to keep interest rates lower. In the non-residential market, what we see as positives are that leasing activity has increased, anecdotally, by discussing with a couple of brokerages, we, we found this out. And then lease rates have stabilized, albeit at fairly low levels, and commercial lending has loosened, and then in the county, building permit activity in the non-residential sector has actually increased. The negatives are that since our analysis was conducted in November two thousand and seven, you see lease rates down fifteen to twenty percent in office area, and then thirty to thirty-five percent in the commercial retail area. Vacancy rates are, while they're stable, they're at about fifteen-year highs, and unemployment and consumer spending obviously are big factors in the non-residential market. And then also, kind of an unknown, is this need to refinance a lot of properties, and so it's a big question about how much paper will be available to allow people to do that, and what the effect on property values will be. So what's the trend? Using the UCSB forecast, what they've told us is that we can expect a stable two thousand and ten, and then we may expect sustained growth in two thousand and eleven. So the bottom line is, while we have some stabilization, there's no meaningful recovery, and there's a lot of variables in the market that lead us to believe that we can't really say for certain that there's going to be this strong recovery in two thousand and eleven. And we still contend, as we have since we brought the ordinance before you, that a good leading indicator is going to be residential permit activity, and one of the attachments to your report shows the, the projects that are potentially affected by this fee decision, and none of them are residential. And so we're really not seeing any residential permit activity. So that being said, our recommendation is to maintain the fees at zero for another year, and that, like last year, we would return to you prior to the end of the fiscal year, and that we would provide you with a new update on market conditions, and if it's warranted, a new recommendation on fees. So that concludes that action. The second component of this was an offshoot of the hearing that we held before you in, in May of last year, when we brought the fee item before you, the council initiated some discussion on the treatment of institutional and nonprofit uses under the non-residential ordinance. And so you directed us at that time to, to do some investigation on that matter- And so you directed us at that time to do some investigation on that matter, and one of the things was to do a survey of other cities as to how they handle these things, and then to report back to you, and if appropriate, suggest some modifications to our ordinance. And the specific focus of that was, again, institutional and nonprofit, but with a focus on hospitals, nonprofit and public, or I'm sorry, nonprofit uses in general, and then public and private schools. And then you asked us to either look at creating separate use classifications for institutional and nonprofits, or possible exemptions if that appeared to be warranted. So just by way of definition, when we talk about institutional, we're talking about things like schools, religious facilities, governmental facilities, and healthcare facilities such as hospitals, and oftentimes assisted living are considered institutional uses, and then nonprofit use types are, again, religious facilities, and most often civic or cause-based organizations, and then in some instances, educational facilities. And then the characteristics that we use when we're looking at devising a use category are employment density, what is the number of employees per thousand square feet, and then salary ranges, how many of those employees fall within our affordable housing categories. And then when we looked at nonprofits for the survey, we also looked at space requirements, and I'll explain why in just a moment. So twenty-seven cities in the state of California have this non-residential linkage fee ordinance in some fashion. When we surveyed them, we got twenty-three responses, and one ordinance we were able to decipher on our own. Three cities, the way their ordinances were structured, we really couldn't get all the information we needed, so we surveyed twenty-four cities for this. And again, the purpose of the treatment was, or of the survey was to see how they treated institutional and nonprofits, whether there's a use category, or if no category, how did they determine how these uses were addressed in the ordinance. So what we found was that none of the twenty-four cities surveyed had separate use categories for institutional and nonprofits, and they addressed these uses in four different ways. They either were subject to the ordinance, they required a special determination, they had an explicit exemption for them, or they were implicitly exempt. And I'd just like to briefly put this chart of the survey results up, and it's a lot of information, but the reason I'm doing so is the diamond on that chart calls out to you how the city handles each of these specific categories. So for instance, hospital, we handle as a special determination; nonprofit, we handle as subject to the ordinance; public schools, we exempt by virtue of a public use, and then private schools, we also require a special determination. And then I'd like to just discuss in a little bit more detail how we handle these things. It's difficult to provide separate use categories for institutional and nonprofit for the reason we discussed at our last hearing last year, that there's such a disparity in the employment characteristics and the salary characteristics of these, it makes it very difficult to place these things uniformly under a separate use category. And so in reviewing other ordinances, there really isn't a precedent, and because of the difficulty in trying to categorize that, we don't really feel that it's warranted to create a special category. So given that, what we did was we looked at the treatment of other cities and the possibility of, or reasonableness of exempting some of these uses. So in the case of hospitals, what we found was that most cities subject a hospital to a fee. There's one city that specifically exempts a hospital, and there's a number of cities that require a special determination consistent with what we do. We believe that because our local hospital is a for-profit entity, that an exemption in that case is not warranted. With regard to nonprofits, the majority of cities did subject nonprofits to their ordinance, but what we found is they generally classified them under the underlying use type. So for instance, if they were an office use, then they would be charged the office fee. If they were a commercial use, a commercial fee. Seven cities exempted nonprofits, but four of these had targeted exemptions. And then what we found, we created a roster of one hundred and eighty-six nonprofits in the city, using the wonders of the internet, and looked at the characteristics of those. And what we found is that the majority of those actually wouldn't be subject to our ordinance, because the size threshold for assessing the fee is seventy-five hundred square feet, and most of these uses are smaller uses, they go into existing spaces in a lot of instances, and so in large part, they actually wouldn't be subject to our fee as it stands, or our ordinance as it stands now. With regard to public schools, there was a clear majority who exempted these, and we're consistent with that, and we already exempt them. The interesting thing was private schools. Fourteen of the twenty-four cities exempted private schools, but a lot of them didn't distinguish between a nonprofit and a for-profit private school, which we found kind of interesting, only two actually did. So that being said, after looking at the survey and some of the characteristics that went into devising our ordinance, what we'd like to propose to you is that we expand the exemptions under our ordinance to include private schools, but we would like to specify that that be applicable only to nonprofit private schools, and the reason for that is that we feel that that's a use that's actually providing a public benefit without benefit of profit. And then also with, in your staff report, we provided you with some alternate language. If you felt so inclined to broaden that, you could also add a second exemption that would exempt all nonprofits that are officially recognized by the state. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on either of those items.
Thank you. Questions of staff or report? Okay. Bill, let me see if I understand this correctly. Without getting too specific, what category does that put Cal Luthern in?
Well, if you were to go with the municipal code amendment tonight, they would be considered a nonprofit school, because they have a nonprofit status.
They are a 501(c)(c), so that status would exempt them.
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's why we're making the distinction, because we feel if you're operating not for profit, what we didn't want to do was give an exemption that said, you know, like if a trade school came in, they're a private school, but they're actually operating for profit, so.
I understand. So Cal Luthern and Lorena, which Lorena does have, it's a private nonprofit, but it does have a housing component, but it would also be exempt then?
As long as they're demonstratable as a nonprofit, recognized by the state, and...
Okay. Okay. And I'm trying to think, what, Seventh Day Adventist in Newbury Park?
Well, I don't know what their status is in terms of, are they, they're probably a religious...
They're, well, they're, all of these have affiliations, I should say, they're not, they all have affiliations, but they all should be nonprofits, so they would all be...
Right. If they're operating under the umbrella of a nonprofit, then they would be exempt, correct.
Okay. Questions of staff? Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Hatcher. Are you wearing purple in honor of the Lakers?
I shouldn't tell you, but I'm actually a Celtic fan.
You could have waited till I got a decision. I know, that wasn't too wide of me.
Okay. I have a question regarding the recommendation of zero fees, basically. Given that we are in desperate need of providing affordable housing, and we've had testimony in the past from our affordable housing advocates that they really would like to even collect more money than was originally presented or accepted, with having a zero fee, wouldn't the burden on subsidizing affordable housing fall on the taxpayers via the city of Thousand Oaks?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I'm saying that with no money coming in at all, and we're getting requests from many mansions or the housing authority to subsidize or give loans, for example.
Right.
We're being asked all the time, wouldn't it be fair to have the private sector pitch in?
Yes, I mean, the short answer to that is yes, but this isn't our only source of funding. We have a fairly sizable increment flow through our redevelopment agency. Legally, we're obligated to expend twenty percent of that on affordable housing, and we have spent way above that limit, and so those funds are still available to us. And I think, you know, you're absolutely right, that it's expensive to produce affordable housing, but I think what we're looking at, again, and one of the points I tried to make in the presentation, is that, you know, when you begin to see the market come back, you're going to start seeing residential activity, and right now, we're not seeing that. There was a chart in the staff report that showed the projects that were potentially affected by this fee, and that amounted to about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, five hundred and thirty of which was attributable to the hospital. And then that is if they pull building permits within the next year, which is not a given, whether it makes economic sense for them to do. So I think what we're looking at is, you know, we really hinged a lot on the feasibility aspect of adopting this ordinance and the fees, and it's pretty clear by the permit activity in the market that a lot of things just aren't feasible right now. And what we're intending to do with you is to be able to come back, say, next year, if we begin to see the market turn, and say, you know, we think it's time to assess these fees, and I think what we'll be able to do is still continue to capture the lion's share of fees that we'll be able to.
Well, I believe the planning commissioner just recently voted to approve a condo subdivision of twenty-two units.
That...
And obviously, they wouldn't have to pay anything, but realistically speaking, how much more building will we have in the future, once the economy improves?
Well, that's hard to predict. I mean, obviously, under our current housing element, we've done some upzoning, and so we've made allowance for additional units, and over the course of time, it's hard to predict. You know, right now, you're right, we're close to build out, but we've done some things where I think we have availability for, I want to say about eighteen hundred units.
Well, that's true, eighteen hundred units, but we may or may not see that being built. I'm just wondering, looking into the future, really, how much money will we get into the housing trust fund?
Well, but I think, though, you also have to remember that the reason that we created a linkage fee ordinance in our program in tandem with that is so that we're able to capture revenue off of non-residential development as well. And so it's important to remember that those things are intended to act in concert. And so while you can say, well, yeah, you got eighteen hundred units, I think there's still a lot of vacant land available for industrial and commercial, and, you know, when we first adopted the ordinance, it was infeasible to assess a fee on industrial and R and D, but it could be as the economy changes and we reassess, that we'll then be able to assess a fee on those types of uses. So I think over time, and I apologize, I don't have the figures in front of me, but we showed a projection that I want to say was on the order of twenty-eight million dollars over the course of the lifetime of the city, so it wasn't a small figure we were talking about. And it's hard to predict land use trends over an extended period of time. So I think, you know, our position is we're just being cautious. The economy has really had its back broken, you're beginning to see a fragile recovery, and our position is, you know, let's just be conservative, wait another year, and we'll come back to you, and when we begin to see it as being feasible, you'll see a fee recommendation in front of it.
Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? There being none, and we have no speaker cards on this item. We'll close the public hearing. Open for council discussion. Pleasure of the council. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hearing, no, any objections. I'd be prepared to move staff recommendations, one, two, and three, and four. I think this is, I want to compliment staff for a very nice write-up. It's very comprehensive, it answered a lot of questions, and I agree, the bottom line is, regardless of how we feel about linkage fees and in lieu, this is not a really good time to do it. We need to get the climate a little bit healthier before we start applying fees, I think. So anyway, I do move one through four. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Comments to the motion? Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
Mr. Glancy, would you consider separating item four, which is the classification of nonprofit institutional uses?
It'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
The motion then, as I understand, and it would be, the revised motion would be items one through three of the staff recommendation?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Discussion to that motion. There being none, please vote.
The motion carries four-one. Councilmember Bill De La Pena dissenting.
Okay, and we'll go with item four. Discussion on that, Mrs. Bill De La Pena? None? Dr. Glancy?
No, just statement of the motion.
Restatement of the motion to approve the staff recommendation for item four. Comment to the motion? There being none, please vote.
The motion carries five zero, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending subsection nine dash ten point four oh three, related to Article Four, Non-Residential Development Linkage Fee Program, MCA 2010-70236.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight C. Would the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item eight C, a municipal code amendment, MCA 2009-70121, amendments to Affordable Housing Ordinance Density Bonus Program to Reflect Changes in State Law. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council, and we have no speaker cards for this item.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Report, staff report, again, Mr. Bill Hatcher, Senior Planner. Evening. Ken?
Mayor, council members, you're not done with me yet. Just by way of background, the density bonus program was adopted as part of the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which we were just discussing. That ordinance took effect in October of 2008. In January of 2009, the state density bonus law was amended by Assembly, or I'm sorry, State Bill 2280 Saldana, and the density bonus program is intended to implement state density bonus law, and as you'll recall, when we brought this item before you initially, we're basically mandated to adopt this program, and so there's very little discretion that's afforded us in implementation. And just by way of summary, the program awards increased density in exchange for the provision of a certain percentage and levels of affordable housing. As I mentioned, there's a little discretion left to the city, so basically what Saldana did was it provided, or I'm sorry, just very briefly, the provisions of the existing ordinance include the amount of density bonus, the percent and number of affordable units, the number of allowed incentives, and the basis for denying requested incentives, concessions, or waivers. So AB 2280, which, by the way, was supported by the League of California Cities and was intended to be clarifying legislation, provides a number of changes to definitions, and so I won't go into those unless you have specific questions. The one significant change was the previous legislation tied certain requests to financial feasibility, and so we had structured our ordinance to reflect that. The new bill struck all of the references to financial feasibility and added a requirement that a developer can request waiver or modification to development standards that they believe would preclude development of the project at density bonus levels, which stands to reason, because you would have a set of standards, and when you allow increased density, oftentimes those standards won't facilitate the additional units. So just very briefly, what we did was we struck all references to financial feasibility in our ordinance, and we restructured the way that our ordinance is set up, so that it allows for permitted incentives, and then it allows an applicant to request modification or waiver to any development standard that they feel would preclude the project from being developed as allowed under a density bonus, and then we adopted, or proposing new findings to reflect those steps as well. So that in a nutshell is kind of what's required. Again, this is implementation of state law, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of discretion in terms of what we can do with it. But in this Assembly bill, actually, was a good thing in terms of kind of clarifying some things. So we're basically recommending that you read the ordinance and title only, and further reading be waived, and if no objection, introduce the ordinance. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Questions of staff? Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
I am ready to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. We have no speaker cards on this item. If there are no more questions of staff at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and pleasure of the council, Mrs. Bill De La Pena?
I move a recommendation... I move a recommendation of staff to, um, approve the ordinance and to be read entitled only, and further reading be waived and introduced.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? There being none? Please vote.
The motion carries five-zero, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending subsections nine-dash-ten-point-one-oh-two-K, nine-dash-ten-point-one-oh-two-R, nine-dash-ten-point-five-oh-two, nine-dash-ten-point-five-oh-two-A-one, nine-dash-ten-point-five-oh-two-A-one-three, or triple I, uh, nine-dash-ten-point-five-oh-three, nine-dash-ten-point-five-oh-three-C, nine-dash-ten-point-five-oh-six-A, nine-dash-ten-point-five-oh-seven-C, in order to bring the code into conformance with state density bonus law.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you all. Uh, we'll now move to eight-D. I'm going to switch chairs. For those of you that are interested, it's halftime, and the Lakers are up by 12. Keep in mind, these are the former Minneapolis Lakers. They used to, used to play in the arena on Nicolat Avenue. Item eight-D, Municipal Service Center Expansion. It's a public hearing. Would the clerk please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item eight-D, the Municipal Service Center Expansion, Planning Cases, Land Use LU-ten, 2010-dash-70076, Specific Plan Amendment, 2010-dash-70043, Special Use Permit, Major Modification, 2010-dash-70041. The applicant is the City of Thousand Oaks, and it's located at the southwest corner Rancho Caneo Boulevard and Caneo Center Drive. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council, and we have no cards.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Staff report by senior planner Pam Leopold. Good evening, Ms. Leopold.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This evening, uh, we have the expansion of the Municipal Service Center. The location of the project is at the southwest corner of Rancho Caneo Boulevard and Caneo Center Drive. The project involves a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment to the Rancho Caneo Specific Plan Number Seven, and special use permit major modification. This particular slide shows the location of the existing Municipal Service Center and the 3.29 acre parcel that's slated for expansion of the Municipal Service Center. You can see the, um, area to the west of the Municipal Service Center is mainly open space and currently a trailhead, and existing trail runs through that particular area, uh, which provides access to the western plateau and to the Caneo Canyon's open space area. The project description involves the existing Municipal Service Center, which is 10.05 acres, and the adjacent vacant lot of 3.29 acres to the south of the existing Municipal Service Center. The expansion of the existing service center will provide for an additional meeting room, office space addition to the main building consisting of 2,511 square feet, parking lot and landscaping improvements to reconfigure an existing parking lot for better internal circulation, and an exterior 5,000-square-foot plant and tree nursery, which will be located in the northern, northwest portion of the project area. The improvements on the vacant parcel include a transportation bus storage area with photovoltaic canopies, compressed natural gas fueling stations. The household hazardous waste facility consists of 3,874 square feet, and also the access improvements to the adjacent trailhead on open space property. And this will be, the access improvements will be located on the very southern portion of the 3.29 acre parcel. General Plan Amendment, Land Use Amendment 2010-70076 will allow amendment to the general plan land use for the 3.29 acre parcel from industrial, or to institutional. And the Specific Plan Amendment, 2010-dash-70043, to the Rancho Caneo Specific Plan, also known as Specific Plan Number Seven, will amend the specific plan designation for the 3.29 acre parcel from employment park, industrial to city property. The Special Use Permit Major Modification, SUMJ 2010-70041, will modify the site plan, the other exhibits, and the conditions of the, um, Special Use Permit for the Municipal Service Center. The SEP will also reflect the additional improvements, show the building, new building addition, and the parking reconfiguration to the existing facility. With regard to the background, in March of 1992, the city council originally approved the general and specific plan amendments for this particular Municipal Service Center site, and also a special use permit to allow for the phase construction. At that time, it was envisioned that 2,000, 28,482 square feet of building area and improvements. In February 2006, the city acquired the rights to the vacant lot, the 3.29 acre parcel. And in May 10th of this year, the commission recommended approval of the current applications for the expansion of the Municipal Service Center. This particular slide shows a view from Rancho Caneo Boulevard, the westbound lanes near the Baxter Bioscience Facility, looking southwest. This particular slide shows a view from the east, location of the proposed building addition, and the parking lot will be reconfigured to accommodate that addition. This particular slide shows a view to the north along Caneo Center Drive, the location of the proposed bus, transportation, storage, and the HHR facility. You can see the MSC, um, existing facility in the background. And, um, the southwest portion of, in the foreground, will be the area where the improvements will be for the access to the existing trailhead. Project design consists of 13.34 acres, involving two lots of record. Again, the southern portion will allow for additional improvements for access to the public trailhead located to the west of the Municipal Service Center. And the architecture is contemporary in nature. It complements the existing main building in colors and materials. The project also involves low-impact development and green building measures, which are incorporated into the project. Some of these low-impact development measures consist of the vegetated or green roof for the household hazardous waste facility, bioswales, rain gardens, and pervious paving within the parking lot areas. We have a site plan on this particular slide showing the addition to the Municipal Service Center. Again, the northernmost portion of the project site will have the 5,000 square feet of exterior plant and tree nursery. In the middle of the project, where the 3.29 acre parcel begins, we have the bus and transportation storage area and pervious paving. And the household hazardous waste facility, um, is located further to the south, and then with the, um, small area dedicated to the, um, the access for the trailhead. This particular slide shows the elevations of the Municipal Service Center addition. The top view shows a view looking southwest with the new building addition in the foreground. And the view at the bottom shows, um, the canopied entry for the building addition, uh, looking west. These two slides, or two, two photos on this slide. The top photo shows a view looking southwest of the household hazardous waste facility. And in the bottom view, there is a, um, north, it's a northwest view of the household hazardous waste facility with the vegetated green roof shown. Staff is recommending that the council adopt the resolutions to improve, to approve the final mitigated NAGDEC Number Two Seventy-Six and mitigation monitoring plan and reporting program, the general plan amendment, the specific plan amendment, and the special use major modification. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dowd with the Main Street Architects, which are the consultants for the project, and he has a brief presentation.
Um, again, my name is Dowd Dawn. I'm one of the senior principals at Main Street Architects, who are located in Ventura. And I'm going to keep this presentation very short. Again, um, this is the, the site plan that Pam has shown you before. And then we have a few updated images to share with you. This is the view of the canopy for the bus and transportation, um, center. And, uh, what you're looking at on the fore, um, forefront right here is the proposed permeable paving. And from the, from the onset of the project, we worked very closely with staff, and the direction was to make sure that, that this project is, is a good example of the city's leadership and stewardship of, of its properties, and how the project can be used as, um, sort of like a prototype of, of, you know, something to emulate. This is another view of, um, the, the bus canopy. And, um, the canopy are designed in such a way that, um, the solar panels can go on, on top of that very easily. Um, and it's angled toward the, um, the sun. This is a view of the HHW, um, looking slightly, um, southwest. And, um, the canopy on the front serve as protection for the entry to the facility. This is another view of the facility, um, from the outside of the gate looking in. And this is a view of the facility from the angle, um, kind of looking at the, um, the drop-off area. And, um, what you're looking at over the, the roof of, of the facility is what Pam referred to as the vegetated roof. This is the view of the addition to the MSC building itself. And, um, the step leading to the entry of that facility. And this is the, kind of like a bird's eye's view. Again, it's just an updated, um, image of what Pam showed you earlier. Uh, of course, we have introduced, um, you know, a lot of sustainable strategies to the project. Among them is how can we use the site, um, in such a way that it can detain the majority of rainwater onto the site? And that can be achieved through a series of, of features such as, um, permeable pavings and, uh, rain gardens and bioswale. And these are images to illustrate, um, how the project would look like afterward. We have also, um, turned the Caneo Center Drive street into what we refer to as Green Street, uh, with, with features such as, uh, bulbous, uh, to increase the rain garden area. And that would also help, um, slow down the traffic around that, that curve. So these are different, different approaches that, that we, we use to, um, include in this project. Of course, you know, in addition to, um, those features that we have on, um, on the outside of the building, we also have, um, low-flow, um, you know, fixtures inside the, the building and, um, irrigation, um, system that will reduce the, the usage by, by, you know, 50% through the use of native and, and, and adopted, uh, adapted plant selections. Again, these are images of different features that are included in this project. High-energy, um, lighting features, um, high building insulation levels, low E do glazing. We use lots of overhangings and, uh, and canopies to help provide shade to the site and reduce what is referred to as, um, heat island effect. And, uh, the project is going to also use a lot of recycled material in, in, during Indoor quality, um, air, indoor air quality plan is also a part of the, uh, the project as well as low-emitting paint and adhesive and ceilings and flooring materials. And I believe that that's the end of the presentation. Uh, I'm available for any questions that, that you might have, and also our senior Paul Craftery is here to answer any question that you might have about, uh, you know, the green strategies.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Ms. Bill De La Pena?
Thank you. I, um, going over the, the slides once again, and I see that the city purchased this land in 2006, and there've been several approvals since then. And if, if staff could refresh my memory, uh, when did we choose this particular firm? When was that approved?
Uh, we were selected back in 2009, beginning in 2009.
Okay, 2009. And, uh, thank you. And what was the estimated cost of this project?
Uh, the estimated cost right now is, um, 5.8 million.
Over how long? How long would this, a project take? How many phases?
Well, depending on what kind of construction bids that we get, when we do put it out to bid later this year, we could do everything as one phase, or we could split it and do the, uh, the transportation por, portion as well as the hazardous waste facility as a first phase, and then at a later time do the expansion to the MSC building.
And when did the council approve this expenditure?
Well, they're currently in the two-year capital program budget, there's, uh, 5.2 million that's been budgeted. So our estimate right now is a little bit above what the capital program budget and, and funding appropriation is at. But we're also at the same time, uh, pursuing additional grant funding. Right now, we have about 800,000 in grants toward the project, but we are hopeful to get additional grant money, especially for the hazardous house, household waste facility, as well as potentially additional transportation funding grant.
Was it the 2009-10 budget year that this was approved?
Yes, in the capital budget, the funding is slated for 2009, 2010 fiscal year.
Okay. And, uh, since it's already been budgeted in our capital improvement program, is there a, an immediate need or rush to complete this project? immediate need or rush to complete this project? Is that something that we need immediately?
This is a priority two project, so it is a needed project, but it's not essential in terms of meeting any kind of regulatory mandate or a health and safety priority. So that's what council had designated as priority two.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions of staff? Mr. Spurgeon, perhaps you can help me, or Ms. Leepold. In reading the materials on this, I know this is not, we have not sought LEED certification on this project?
If I may, please. Even though we are not looking for LEED certification right now, but the project is designed in such a way that we would comply with LEED, I believe, at LEED level, and maybe even silver level. Because to get the certification, there'll be additional expenses, and we're trying to hold back the expense, you know, as much as we can.
Okay, I recognize that that can be a delicate balance, but in an era of environmental sensitivity and all of the other issues that we deal with on a regular basis, just about every new public works project structure has to be kind of held to that test. We've had, we did have such success with the transportation center. This is the first physical building, I think, that we've built since then, isn't it?
That's correct. And as Dow indicated, the design standards for this facility are to LEED standards. And then, at some point, we will need to make a decision whether or not we pursue the actual certification, because there are considerable expenses and specialized consultants to certify materials and whatnot. But the specifications will be, and the design has been, to meet all of those LEED requirements.
But if I hear you correctly, Mr. Spurgeon, at some point, there will be a decision point where some of, where your folks, you, whomever, will say, okay, now we take a look at it, now we identify the costs, do we go that road, or don't we at this time?
That's correct. And I would say that we would do that prior, or at the point where we ask you to approve an award of construction contract.
Okay, okay. And we'll know the cost differences and everything involved with that decision at that time. On one of your opening slides, the aerial that showed the site, the piece immediately adjacent to this, between the site and Baxter, bordered by Rancho Caneo and Caneo Center, is that privately owned now? There's nothing on it?
Yes, it is currently vacant.
Yeah, that's correct. That's owned by Chappelle Industries.
By Chappelle. And it looks to be about five acres from this, comparing the 10 acre, three acre.
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. I guess, Mr. Spurgeon, in your discussions, long-term planning for land acquisitions and uses and what have you, in my mind, there will be a time, this one from 1992 to now is 18 years, so this stuff sometimes moves at a snail's pace, but there will be a time when the city may well be looking at maintenance and storage facilities for public safety vehicles, fire, police, et cetera. And currently, those large maintenance projects have to take place either at the Fire Department's Center in Camarillo, or at the County's Maintenance Center in Al Rio. The garage facilities at East Valley are rather meager for, they handle day-to-day maintenance and service and what have you. But are, in the discussions, are we looking at eventually being able to accommodate emergency vehicles, both storage, maintenance, outfitting, and all of the things related to that? Fine. Or do you want the city manager to answer that?
At his pleasure. I can tell you that as part of the design and planning for this expansion, those needs were not addressed.
Okay, okay. Well, as one member of the council, it seems to me that at some point, someone should start thinking about that. Because with the availability of undeveloped land in areas where it doesn't encroach on residential or have other encroachments, even if we're ever able to get past the Edison Company's net metering issues, array fields for solar panels and what have you, and this is one of the last inventories of that kind of property that we have in the community. So, okay. Additional questions? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Spurgeon, or whoever up there, when you get this project developed a little further, what would you anticipate the increase in cost would be to comply with LEED requirements percentage-wise?
Well, actually, we already designed the project to comply with LEED standard. And the commissioning would be a matter of soliciting bids from consultants to be able to do that part of the work. And right now, just sort of off the top of my head, I would presume that to run in a range of maybe $50,000 to $100,000 for that consulting work.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions of staff on the presentation? Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to address the funding issue and remind the council that the process of acquiring this property was a very elaborate, complicated, complex exchange, a highly cooperative effort between the school district, park district, Chappelle Industries, and the city. And I believe it was February 2006 when the acquisition was done, the whole exchange. And we put in, I don't remember how much money, but $2 million, or, I'm sorry?
It was 2.7 million.
Okay, 2.7. So you've already made that investment. And we do have a sort of a commitment to move forward for the household hazardous waste and all the other uses out there. Now is the time to strike in terms of, from a development perspective, because the cost of construction is low, relatively speaking, and it's a great opportunity to go forward. There's very little general fund money involved, as the funding sources are delineated, they're mainly special funds and so on. And it's just a great opportunity to go forward and do something that'll be beneficial to the community for many years, if not decades to come. I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. There being no further questions of staff, I have no, oh, I'm sorry, Miss Spell Dale Penney.
Thank you very much. Because of the comments that Mr. Mitnick made, where exactly is, or what is the source for the funding? You said it's not the general fund, and I don't have the capital improvement book budget in front of me.
And we'll do a follow-up memo for council. I'm not sure if it's delineated in here, but in the capital improvement program budget, which was approved by the council before, and it's, we can provide copies of the page, but I'm looking at it here, and there's eight or nine different sources, there's a variety of water fund sources, wastewater fund sources, because their rolling stock will be worked on there, streets, transportation funds, landscape and lighting district funds, city lighting district, solid waste fund, also federal transportation grants of $585,000. General fund portion is about a half million dollars of the total, roughly. But we will definitely follow up delineating where the money came from for the purchase of the land years ago, as well as the money that's going to be used for this project. It's a very multi-layered project with a multiple layer, multiple funding sources, including special grants that we would lose if we don't go forward, the money would disappear.
Thank you for refreshing my memory, because I really don't recall the details very well, but thanks for doing that.
Okay. Okay. There being no further questions of staff, and we have no cards on this, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. A pleasure of the council. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendations one, two, three, and four.
I have a motion. Comment to the motion? Please vote.
The motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Bill De La Penya dissenting.
Item nine, department reports, we have none. Item 10, redevelopment agency reports, we have none. 11, committee, commission, board reports, none. Item 12, council issues and recommendations, follow-up reports on meetings, conferences attended by council members. I will take 12A1, National League of Cities Public Safety and Crime Prevention Steering Committee meeting, update May 27th to the 29th. As has been, the primary focus of the National League of Cities Public Safety Committee for the last few meetings, emergency preparedness, again, took center stage with the following three items that I thought were significant enough to bring to your attention. The item topic, referring federal disaster response and recovery. Mr. Ben Billings, who's on staff with the U.S. Senate Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs, addressed and recapped the issues of the administration on enhancing and improving federal disaster response and recovery. State and local perspective on emergency response, Jim Mullen, the director of the Washington State Emergency Management Division, which gave an excellent perspective, and also works very closely with the other coastal states, Oregon and California, on these critical issues of emergency response. And the third one, building a public safety broadband network. Bill Scherer, chief technology officer for Seattle, Washington, and Seattle is one of the sites that's advancing on the broadband network issue, which is of paramount importance with all public safety agencies across the country. There were a number of other items, but the recommendation is to receive and file. No comment to the motion, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item two, League of California Cities, Channel Counties Division, Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Channel Counties Division of the League met June 4th up in Solvang. And as usual, it was a good turnout, and it was a good meeting altogether. Present at the meeting also was Dave Mullinex, our representative from the league, also the league chair, Robin Lowe, mayor of the city of Hemet. Our guest speaker was Jerry Roberts, who's a former editor of the San Francisco Chronicle. And I have to say, he had a very pleasant way of presenting his disdain on the doings of Sacramento. He, in his words, the state is in widespread dysfunction, and he doesn't consider the improvement of the economy for about five years. He blames our current status on several things. One was gerrymandering, two, term limits, three, institutional memory loss, which is a consequence of term limits. Proposition 13, which heralded the realignment of the relationship with the state and local government, and putting control of the money more in the state than taxes. Boost taxation and a two-thirds sub-vote requirement. It was a good program, it was a good meeting, and I recommend attending those things to anyone who has the opportunity. And the motion would be to receive the report.
I have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 13, city manager, follow-up on request from the public. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next city council meeting will be on June 22nd, and at this point, we have three department reports to point out. One is hopefully the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Business Improvement District will move forward. The other item is annexation of 28 acres on Upper Ranch Road in North Ranch. And then, the big item will be the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget adjustments. I want to plug again tomorrow's Safety and Wellness Day event from 12 to noon. It's on the city's website, out in front of City Hall. Public is encouraged to attend. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, closed session. Item 14A, as mentioned at the onset of the meeting, has been pulled. Ms. Albano, city attorney, please announce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council will be going into closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection B, and there are three potential cases. Second, conference with real property negotiators. Property is obtaining an easement at 2297 Rutland Place, APN 571-0141-125, Thousand Oaks. Negotiator for the agency, Mark Watkins, public work director, deputy public work director, city attorney, and assistant city attorney, Charmaine Jackson. Negotiating party for the property owner, Robert Whiteyer, and Nancy Schreiner, under negotiation price and terms of payment pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.8. And lastly, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection C, one case. I do not believe that there will be anything that needs to be reported out, but if there is, it will be reflected in the minutes of tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. At this time, we will adjourn this meeting to our next regular meeting of June 22nd, 2010. We are adjourned.